All right. This is, this is the, this is the point of, um, P, right?
Yeah, but I said this.
Plus, oh, okay.
All right, there it is. Good evening, I'd like to call to order Town of Dayton Board of Health Special Meeting at the Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Ave. This is also a remote participation Zoom meeting, it is a public meeting being recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting on YouTube at wdo.com/townofdayton. The time is 4:33 PM. This time stand, pledge allegiance please. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic. Which stands. Under God, in heaven. Can you guys hear me?
Yes. We can.
Can you see me?
We can see you.
See you too.
I don't know which is worse.
Um, I'd like to take, um, new business, D and E out of order and present them now. 4D is grant process. Vinnie, would you like to elaborate on that, please?
Yeah, I make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I will step down as chair to vote and make motions for the entire meeting. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to take D and E out of order. Present them. May I have a second?
My second.
And could we have a vote? Aye.
Aye.
Whenever you're ready, Vinnie, we'd like to hear what you've got to say about the grants.
Okay, so, uh, like, what I was talking about is, as far as, um, the grant, uh, process is concerned, is, um, you know, how you apply for them, uh, you go to, you know, grants.gov, we've been talking about this just a, a little bit about, um, you know, you set up an account, you go to grants.gov, then you look for the grants that are applicable for each, uh, you know, for our department. So, for example, uh, we have talked about, um, you know, grants for CPR, we've talked about, um, you know, grants for other things related to the, to the Board of Health. So, what my plan is, uh, and the other part, the other part of the process is that, uh, you need to have a few things, you need to have a UEI number, a tax ID number, which I have, uh, for the Town of Dayton, you need to have a, um, project name. And the project name doesn't have to be formal, so I spoke with Serena about what to do about a, a project name. This is kind of where I was stuck as I was going through, um, going through the, the application. So, the project name, you can, you can make up a name, you could say, uh, Board of Health, uh, CPR, uh, project for, um, you know, schools in the Town of Dayton, something like that. Budget would be zero, because there's no budget. Then you apply for whatever, whatever funds that you can find that are available. What you have to do is, well, what you have to do is you have to let Serena know the name of, what the name of the budget is and what the grant is, so that she'll be able to flag it if we get the funds, when the funds come in. So, um, that's all part of the process. Now, the other piece that I, uh, that I had talked about in some of the other meetings is that the forms, a lot of the forms, as I was going through this, was, were cookie cutter. So, they say, fill out form, I forget what it is, so let's call it 17B. And then the next grant is fill out form 17B. So, part of what I'm doing is just, which goes into, um, 4E, is to set up the forms, then put those into a shared drive location, into a folder that's on a shared drive that anyone on any board in the Town of Dayton could access. And the forms would be, here's the form with the UEI, here's the form with the tax ID number, because some, some of the grants want UEI numbers, some of them want the tax ID number. And then they could go in with those forms and then apply for the grants, um, that they want. My other thought, uh, that I had as far as that shared drive is that, let's say that I found some grants that were available for the sewer department. Well, I could take that grant name and, or that, that download, put it in that file. So, if we had, say we had different sections that were in that shared drive, Board of Health, Sewer Department, um, et cetera, you know, um, you know, Building Department, um, Street Department, whatever it happens to be, and put those into those files so that people would have access for them. There's a few things that this helps us is that, um, it's not only, might not only be like individual, um, uh, boards or, or departments, but would also be something that could be general, generalized, so that we could get monies into the, into the, um, general fund. So, again, I've talked about how we're in the whole as far as the BP project is, well, if we can find funds, uh, and, and apply that to the general fund, um, we, you know, and, you know, to get the, um, the, um, the deficit down, um, that would just help everybody in the town, you know, we're not gonna have to pay taxes, things like that. So, that's, uh, you know, a lot where I was going with it. Then the other part of, that I was talking about was, people, I know Barbara's looked into it, I don't know if Tammy's looked into it, uh, but if you've looked into this process, it can be a bit, um, challenging. I know, it's not difficult, but it can be a bit challenging if you've never done it. So, what I was going to do was to put in, um, like a quick start or like instructions in another folder that would be a shared drive, because I certainly don't want to write grants for every department and, uh, board, uh, in the Town of Dayton, that's, that would probably be a, a full-time job. But if I, if we put in like a startup or instructions, it's like, go to grants.gov, create your, create your name, here's where you can get, uh, grants for this, for the, um, from the state, here's where you can get grants, uh, on, in the federal government, and then break it down that way. Here are the forms that you would, you would need, you would need to set up, you know, you're always gonna need Form 17A, you know, that form is available in folder, you know, in the folder in, in the, um, shared drive. Uh, so, uh, that's where I was going with that, um, and what I'm going to do, um, now that I know more of the process and, like, the stumbling blocks for me were, um, names of the projects, and then budget, and, um, then some of the other things, like the UEI number, the tax ID number, which I have. So, I'm gonna start going forward with that, and, um, if I do come across other, other, other grants or things that would be applicable for other towns, you know, I'm gonna tuck those away in a folder on my own until we can get this, um, shared drive, you know, up and running. I did speak with one of the selectmen, um, about this, uh, recently, about, okay, how, how would we go about creating a shared drive? I don't think the town has one. He thought the town administrator would be able to do that. I don't know, to have, Barbara, have we hired a town administrator?
Yes, he just started yesterday, I believe, I haven't met him.
Okay, so you, you want me to give him like, at least a couple of hours to settle in before I, before I handle this?
We're giving him a little rest before we, uh, go and visit him all.
All right. So, what, what I'll do, uh, on my end is I'll just start tucking these things away in folders and on my own. Anything, anything that I find with, that is applicable to the Board of Health that I think we can use, or if you think, uh, we should apply for, just call me or email me, and then if, when I find them, I'll share them with, um, everyone on the board, and of course with Liz, and, uh, and then we'll go from there. You know, what I'd really like to see, what, what my, my goal would be is to get this into, and expand this, you know, not only for the Board of Health, but again, through every single board and every single, uh, department i- in the, in the Town of Dayton, make it easy for them, and I would certainly assist, again, I'm, I, I don't wanna write, and I won't write, every single grant, but I certainly assist them in, in ordering to do that. I think Barbara had mentioned about having someone on each, um, board or on each committee, uh, in each department that would be designated as, uh, applying for, for grants, and I think that that's a great idea.
A great idea.
You know, I would be willing to assist, but, you know, I, I don't wanna do it. The other part of it is, as Barbara knows, because I think she has applied for some of these grants, is that the reason that I'm talking about streamlining these forms and putting them in folders is to save time. If you had to do it every single time, it's gonna take you an hour, an hour and a half to apply for a grant. But if you have cookie cutter forms where you're filling in PAYE, Town of Dayton, all of that information, here's the tax ID, here's the, here, here's the, um, UEI number, um, here's what you have to do, here's the contacts, and if you just fill all that in and leave the rest blank, like project name, budget, grant that you're applying for, things like that, now it's just a matter of pulling up that form, plugging in those few pieces of information, streamline the process, apply for the grants. My sales background, in, in, in sales, if you're familiar with this, i- it's called a sales funnel. You fill up the sales funnel, think of it as a cone, and you fill it up with leads, and eventually, some of the leads are gonna come out of the funnel, and that's what you do, the same thing with grants, keep filling it up with grants, keep applying, keep applying, keep applying, because some of them might be 18 months out, some of them might be six months out, some of them might have, you know, $50,000, and then six months from now they have $25,000. But if you can get 5,000 here, 10,000 there, 2,000 here, you got, it's all gonna add up. And even if we can take that money and apply it, again, to the general fund for other things that the, that the town could pay for, the, um, um, the, you know, the trash bag, um, program that we have, uh, apply it to something like that, that would make, you know, maybe, you know, cut the cost of that if we could, even though Barbara and I sat on a meeting with, with Missy about, it only applies for, um, the cost of the bags and not the program. But there may be something out there that would be applicable to, to the program that, that we could leverage and, you know, and apply for and do. So, um, that is my long-winded explanation of, um, you know, you start out with, you know, small steps and then expand this as much as we can, and make sure that everyone in the town is available, but, you know, I'll take care of the other steps as far as reaching out to, uh, the administrator, you know, once they've get, you know, they've, they've got their feet wet and they're kind of settled in, um, and getting access and what's involved with that, if we have to get involved with IT and things like that, so.
Good job.
Thank you. That's, I'm gonna start doing that, I've been, I've been working the polls in the city of Taunton, so, um, you know, I've been a little bit, uh, busy with that, with early voting and things like that, but what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna try to start doing that, if I, if I can't start it, like, this week, I'll do it, I'll probably have some time either over the weekend or early next week, and I'm gonna start, you know, putting that, those things together. And I'll share with you all, you know, my, my progress and, um, you know, where we're going with it, and, um, you know, how far along we are, and, and, and then, like I said, hopefully we can, we can, uh, get those monies that we need, you know, all across the board.
Uh, Vinnie, Lisa Caladonia would like to speak.
Hi. I'm from Conservation, I'm the Conservation Agent, I'm listening here, and it all sounds really great. I just wanted to throw in, uh, as a suggestion, I think every two months we have department head meetings, is it every two months?
I haven't been to one yet, and I've been here since July.
Well, it's every few months we have one.
Gotta start having them again.
Department head meetings might be a good venue for you to, to present that.
Yes, yeah, I, I, I would have no issue with that, either by Zoom or in person, that's no, that's no problem.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Vinnie.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Vinnie, you can contact also, um, Karen or Leanne up at the office, and they could find out when you could get in to talk to the new TA.
Okay. I'll, I'll do that.
Thank you, Vinnie.
You're welcome.
Next, um, old business review discuss act on animal permit notification. We've decided that there are a lot of, um, buildings that these animals are housed in, and we did have the bond permit, and it was taken off last year, but we've come that we have quite a rodent problem, and we need to investigate, we need to try to find a way to stop this, and, um, a, a lot of the people don't realize how fast rodents can multiply, and what the safe, how we can stop them, how we can prevent them, um, and this is basically why we've want to put the bond, uh, back in, bond permits back in. And, uh, the letter reads, attention property owner, due to an increased number of complaints in regards to keeping of animals, the Board of Health is reinstating permits for bonds in Dayton. A bond is considered an outdoor shelter for animals such as livestock, cows, goats, sheep's, sheep, chickens, et cetera. This permit is being required so that the Board of Health can inspect properties for sanitation and proper housing. Reinstating this permit will also help the Town of Dayton be better prepared for disasters or outbreaks for which notification and slash or evacuations of bond animals might be necessary. This is separate from a kennel license, which is required for three or more dogs at one address. If you need a kennel license, please contact the town clerk. This is separate from a stable permit, which is required for horses. If you have a stable permit, you do not need a bond permit. Part of the permit involves an inspection by the animal control officer and/or health department. Your property has been identified as having animals and requires a bond permit. Please fill in the enclosed bond per, app, permit application and submit to the Board of Health with a check for $25 made payable to the Town of Dayton. If you have any questions, as always, you can, please do not hesitate to contact the Board of Health. Any discussion on this?
I think it's absolutely needed.
It is.
Not to mention any zoonotic diseases that we could experience, so I think it's very important that this is monitored.
That alone is just a draw, so if you wanna add something to it, please.
I think it looks fine.
I thought it was.
It's fine.
I did as well, I mean, I reviewed it, I, I emailed Liz back, I, I don't see anything wrong with that, I think it's perfect.
No, it's perfect.
I think so too.
Yeah.
So, if they have a stable license, because the way you read it is if they have a stable license, they don't need a bond permit, but what if they have chickens and horses?
We'll have to decide on that.
Do they need a stable ant barn, or can, when they go out to do the stable inspection?
I think it would be two separates, separate, so we may have to change that part of it and make it clearer.
Because when you just read it, I thought of it, I was like, what if?
I know, I was reading it too, Liz, and I was like, hmm.
I would think that if you have a bond permit, um, or a stable license, animal control comes out.
Yeah.
So, she's gonna be aware of the chickens, so I, I don't think that both, I don't think both would be needed for something like that.
They're different permits, though, they're different paperwork.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's why it's not, that's why it's two separate, they're two separate collections also.
Yeah, but you wouldn't send someone out there twice to do it?
No.
Inspection all at the same time? So, maybe just adjust the fees? Rather than, I think, stable, barn is 25 and stable is 25. So, if you're getting both, do a $40 charge?
I'd like to do more research on this.
Yeah, I agree, more research.
How about we table it until next meeting and do some research on it?
Sure.
And find them, the fairest way to do it.
Because they're not gonna go out there and inspect twice, they're gonna go and do it all.
No, do it once, but I mean.
The only thing that that one person is paying extra for is that certificate.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think we should make it outrageous for people either, because, not with the cost of feed and everything going up, yeah, we wanna be there for the residents, so.
We want people to be honest with us and.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Do they have a motion to table this until next month?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Republican, I'm so sorry, go ahead, Lisa Caladonia, please.
Um, just thinking out loud, um, a lot of these structures, if they're not, um, under a commercial farm, commercial farms would be exempt under the Wetlands Protection Act, um, not the local bylaws much, but, um, residential, like recreational farms, they would have to also file probably with the Building Department, but definitely check with us to see if they're in a regulated area, so that we have to work something out, you know, unless you're gonna get on permit link, which I think would be great if you guys get on permit link.
We're, we're working on it.
Yeah, because then you could just task Conservation, task the other departments, and no.
Exactly.
I'm just throwing my two cents.
Well, you, you, you're invited to chat with us, and let's get this all squared away, so we can.
I, I know it's necessary, I mean, especially for rodents.
We forget about you a lot, Conservation, sorry.
As long as it's not on purpose.
I, I know. No, we never forget about you on purpose, Lisa, believe me. So, we, oh, could, and could I have a vote, please?
We need to make a motion first.
I thought you just did.
No, she stopped me.
Okay, that's right, I'm sorry, could I have a motion then?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to table the, um, bond permit, stable permit situation until, um, we can do some more research.
Second.
I don't think it's not gonna go out till next year anyway.
Yeah, so we have time. Yeah, let's do it right.
So.
Could I have a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Or be review discuss act conservation request. We have talked with Conservation and have decided to redo the application regulation tests and observation holes to add Conservation to it, therefore, we wouldn't have to bother with it later on and have problems in between. Lisa, would you like to speak on this?
Sure, yeah, I can. So, I included in your packet, you, you may not, many may not have.
Wanna sit at the podium? I mean, sit at the podium, you could try sitting at it, but stand at the podium, I don't know, can we put her on?
It should go to her when she starts talking.
Vinnie, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah, I can't see, uh, her, though. Oh, there she is.
Did you find her?
Yeah, I see her.
Okay, um, so, um, I put a packet together, basically perk reviews have been being done for Conservation and Board of Health for over 20 years that we know of. So, the packet I put together, um, is, includes the letter from my chairman, Jim Digits, who is here, the new form, and then the form that was created in November of '23, the form that was created and used between 2020 and '24, and then there's two more forms, a form that was used around 2012 to 2020, and then previously around 2003. Ironically, I was involved with the 2003 one.
Aiding yourself.
I know, I am so much. So, anyways, the, the forms have evolved over the years. The main concern for this is not to hold things up, but to educate someone, um, because you'd never want them to access the lot through a regulated area if they don't need to, you know, and clear, Barbara knows with her, you know, history, she knows that, you know, so, basically Barbara and I sat down and revised the form, the, the newest form here, it also puts, um, because a lot of times when I get a perk request review, um, I ask them for a sketch or something that shows where on the lot, like a locust map, doesn't have to be a formal plan in any way, shape or form, but approximate area of where they wanna perk. So, we put it right in there and made the soil evaluator sign below, we put the other things they need as well, like the trench permit needs to be obtained, water service needs to be mocked out, um, and that the soil evaluator needs to schedule the, um, perk, not the owner or the developer. Um, we also added back in there the $50 fee for the perks, which we were always getting until, um, the end of '23 through '24. If I'm going to go out and review it, then the Conservation Commission should be collecting a fee for that, it's a very small fee of $50. What else did we change, Barbara?
Yeah, I mean, the big safe, ma.
Oh, yeah, dig safe was important. Um, one more thing, we, I see, we, remember we added was, a lot of times, the people filling out the form don't know if they're within a resource area, so they either leave it blank or they just circle no's. So, in this case, we let them circle unsure, because, you know, it's not always their expertise to know if they're in a wetland.
We added the flood zone also.
Yeah, we added as a site within a flood zone, because a flood zone's technically a regulated wetland area that the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over. So, you know, the goal of this is just to educate someone, so at the beginning, when they're going to perk, I would go out, as I have been doing for years, and I would review the location of the perk to see, is the location within 100 feet? Because on a new lot, you can't put a septic system within 100 feet of a wetland, so why would we let them perk within 100 feet? You can't put a septic system within 200 feet of a river, um, or perennial stream and 200 feet of a rural pool, so why?
I don't know, well, if it's, uh, how it's.
That's a Board of Health concern, so.
100 feet.
They, they have to make sure when they're reviewing it, that they're allowing that to be.
But isn't that, isn't that also, no, that's not our, not our bylaw?
Yeah, the, the engineer, he's.
Yeah.
Use our plans, he makes sure all those things are accounted for.
That's why we have an engineer review all our plans when they come in, instead of none of us doing it, because it needs an engineer to look at it with all, he knows all the laws and all the specifics.
Great.
We're trying to get it covered, so nobody gets in trouble, and they do it all within the law, and nobody has to.
Quite the smooth way, that, that, you know, you either can do it or you can't do it.
Yeah.
Right, and then a lot of times, you know, you know, even with existing structures, so, um, we just, we're revising our bylaw, Conservation bylaw for the fall meeting, so that, um, any existing structure, um, does not have to meet the 100-foot setback or 200-foot setback, because obviously, we want them to replace the septic system.
Yes.
But we would require them to still file a very basic form with us, so that we can ensure that A, they're accessing the site properly, and B, they have the erosion controls in. So, like I said, it's good for them, and I've talked to a couple engineers about it as well, to know at the beginning, instead of when they're putting the design together and the Health Department has a copy, and then they call me and say, does this lot have wetlands? And I say, well, why, why am I just seeing at this point? They've already spent thousands of dollars on the design. I'd rather have, be at the beginning.
And we've seen that, we've seen that.
You know, Barbara should also know that we had a septic, uh, approval this past meeting, and they wanted to put it in one location, and Lisa said, no, uh, it, it can do another one, and they found out that it was a much better location, because they didn't need to do pumping, it was on gravity flow, and it was gonna be cheaper for the homeowner than the live room, you know?
I'm sorry, just, I, I have to jump off, um, I have a previous engagement.
Oh, I'm filming.
No, 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 that's okay.
I didn't realize the time, Vinnie.
This, this is, um, interesting, I wish I could, I could stay for that, I have the form in front of me, but I'll leave it in, in you guys' hands.
You have to vote on this form now?
We will. No, we, we can do it with two.
Okay.
We can do it with two, thank you.
Yeah, because you're still in discussion, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Vinnie.
All right, I, I did review the form, it looks, it looks okay to me, I had some questions, but, um, but I'll leave it to you guys, I'll, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Vinnie.
All right, we'll see you, bye, bye-bye.
Um, so, you know, I, I don't know if, and if you guys had any questions, but, but basically, um, I just think that the way. I just think that the way Barbara and I just changed the form, it's a little more inclusive. It gives us a conservation, the $50 back. I guess we just have to talk about like the process of that. How would that work? So would you guys collect the 50 or would you make them bring it to me?
Could we collect it, Elizabeth? And jot it down and then forward it over to conservation? It would be a separate check.
Yeah, they have an except a separate account line.
I'm sorry?
They have a separate account line. Conservation does.
I know, but could we accept the check and just keep it in an envelope and let them know it's here and have them pick it up? Would that be possible?
We'll see what happens.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one step.
Yeah.
I think that would be good.
Yeah, definitely.
I have them running all over the place, you know, it's.
Right.
Place and that's it.
So, I mean, I don't know if you guys wanted to change anything else on it. Liz, do you have any feedback on it?
No, no, the only thing Barbara asked was the dig safe number.
Yep.
Yeah, that's something I've wanted for quite a while.
Right.
Makes sense to me, having that number there.
Definitely.
It's all in one spot.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so the fees are exactly where you want them, right? This would be the time if you're going to change fees.
I think they're all right for now.
Yeah, we just raised.
Yeah, I don't want to raise anything. I really don't.
Right. So, you know, then, you know, it's pretty straightforward, the bottom. And I try to get them back to you guys within a week anyway.
Yep.
If it's not within a week, it's because they haven't provided me with the locust map. So it's like, I'm not going to go out to this five, four acre site and just walk around aimlessly when, you know, you might want to perk it at the front.
Right.
Right, right.
You might want to retreat lot, you know.
Sounds good, Lisa. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The guys want to vote on it. Yes, want to vote on it.
You have anything else?
No. No, this.
I have a motion to accept the new application for a curculation test in the observation hole as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application for a curculation test in the observation hole.
Thank you. And I will step down and vote, seconded, I'm sorry, second. We've had a discussion. Could, let's have a vote. I, I, motion passes.
Thank you. I think it'll.
It looks.
Oh, Lisa, definitely.
It's going to solve a lot of problems before building, since you're not.
Yeah.
You had some, I'm sure, Lisa is talking about some of the disasters.
I've been involved in a couple of those disasters.
I'm sorry?
We don't have anything to do with building.
No, we don't do the building.
But if they don't have a perk test, then I'm going to get the building.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, we just want to avoid hassle for, you know, the residents and not have to worry, like you said, if they already started the process and then you locate a problem and then it's just going to cost more money and it's just going to be more headaches. So let's do it from the, you know, do it right from the beginning.
Yeah, and a couple examples. I mean, there's a lot on my willing street I can think of. You know, I noticed it was for sale and then I got a perk review and I contacted the, who looked like the new owner. And I said, because I knew him, and I said, did you get that, you know, looked at by a wetland scientist? I'm going to do that. That's a good idea. And he said, I'm glad I did because there's a wetland. It's not a hill. There's a wetland in the middle of it.
Yeah.
And he said, that affects everything for us. So, you know, things like that. Like I said, it's not to stop things. It's just.
To help it, to help the process.
Yeah.
Something should happen. No, that's, that's a great idea.
You know, like you said, you spend thousands and thousands of dollars perking or whatever, and then all of a sudden you find out, whoa, that's a wetland or it's too close to a wetland.
Right.
And so, right, right. And then you have problems. And where there are more and more houses going up, they're looking for every little piece of land. And a lot of those pieces have already been perked or have been looked at. And people are like, no, that's too much trouble. And all of a sudden somebody buys it and they go, oh, it's going to perk. And it doesn't always perk.
Right.
And, you know, there are problems. We'd rather do the problems right at the beginning instead of having them put thousands of dollars in and then realize that they can't use the lot.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
That's our goal.
That's our goal, yes. Thank you very much. Lisa, thank you very much for bringing that to my attention and working with me on that.
You're welcome.
It was well needed.
I appreciate you listening to me on this.
And, you know, it's most fortunate that we can work together.
Oh, yes.
And the harmony between departments are, is going to help the people moving into town.
Yep.
Absolutely.
And it's going to help us too.
Yeah.
You know?
Absolutely. Have a great night.
We've got plenty.
Good night.
Thank you, guys. Back to the meeting.
You guys want to add C to the next one? Wait, you ready? That's kind of a big decision.
Yes, yes.
So we'll have to vote on table.
We have a meeting on Tuesday for the interview, so I can add it to that meeting.
Sure.
It'll get discussed before next month.
Yeah.
Could I have a motion to table for C?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to table for C, the health agent candidate withdrawal for the next meeting.
I'll step down and second that. And could we have a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Oh, this is a good one. For F, Review Discuss Act Rat Complaint in North Dyton Offer Better Word Vermin.
We've got another one last week.
Pardon?
Same house?
No, different house.
Okay.
And then we got one about Lincoln Village.
Okay.
But as Barbara found out, they did some construction and I think that.
It's stirring everything up.
Yes. It's that time of year, it's getting cold, the vermin, they're coming in. They want to be friends of everybody. They want to live with them. And so people, please check around your foundation. See if you can find any holes or little paths that the rats, simple terms, are trying to get in. Call the Board of Health. We'll give you some names of things you can use. Or call an exterminator. That would also help. We are working on it. We really are working on it. I've been working on it for.
Once the bond permit is in place and we're going to figure out that abandoned property, there's an abandoned lot in the middle of all of it, so.
Okay.
Trying to see if we can find the owner.
Yes, North Dyton.
So that's probably where they're all hiding.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, that totally makes sense. I'm sure.
Well, with food, come back and they have.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Don't, uncover all your garbage cans. Please put covers on them, just sand that. Your garbage is in a garbage can. Doesn't do the trick because the rats can go in. They enjoy it. If you have animals, please keep all the food for the animals in metal containers and try to pick up whatever the animals don't finish because the rats will.
Eat through everything.
Have a great supper. Is anything else on that? No.
So what is our plan for that particular complaint?
Oh, I've already contacted them. I always contact right away.
They sent a register, a certified letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
They haven't responded, so the next step is a violation.
Okay.
We'll be sending that letter out.
Okay.
Yes, one way or the other.
Okay.
G, Review Discuss Act Dyton Police Autism and Dementia Program. That was a, that's a program the Dyton Police are working on. And what it is, if you have someone in your house that has dementia or autism, you can fill out a form down at the Dyton Police Department. This is a new program. Our police department is starting, but it's getting huge and all the surrounding departments, I think eventually will pick it up. I think it's H.J. Swartz. I think that's his name, the officer that is, is, has devised it. And if you do have a person in your household with autism or dementia or some special needs, if you could contact the Dyton Police, they will note it down. They will put it into their computer. So then when your phone call or your address comes up, it will flash on the screen and the police officer that is responding to your home will know of the special needs in your family. And I think it's going to be a fantastic program.
It certainly is. We had that in Rhode Island before I left.
Really?
It's a great program.
Yeah, it is.
Certainly is a great program because then they can tailor to how they're responding a little bit differently.
Yes. And also he had a seatbelt, it's a covering on the seatbelts that also alerts if there's a car racks and this person is in a car. The, the people responding.
Will know.
EMTs, the police will know about it.
That's fantastic. Much needed.
Special treatment.
Much needed.
Yes, yes. He will be coming in a future meeting to speak on this.
Awesome.
Okay, items not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours. I've got interview for town nurse. We've got an applicant. We'd like to interview her. Him, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, Liz.
And that's set up for next week, next Tuesday at 6:30.
Tuesday at 6:30.
And we've got that set up at Tuesday, a special meeting at 6:30. Liz, sorry.
Yep.
For an interview.
That's going to be here.
Okay.
We'll add the health agent to that agenda.
Okay.
Approval of minutes, September 19th, 2024, special meeting. You read them?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have a motion to accept?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from September 19th, 2024, and October 16th, 2024.
Okay, so we're doing both meetings. So that's October 19th and October 16th, the health agent interview meeting. That was the second one. And I will step down and second that motion. Could I have a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next meeting, we've got a date of 11/19/24. For our next meeting, it would be here at 4:30. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn today's meeting.
And I second that motion. That vote?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Good night, everyone. See you next month. Oh, no, we'll have one next week. Sorry about that.